Okay, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we are back. And before we call any cases, we'll take continuances or withdrawals.
There you go, you're good.
Hello, hello? Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Kupiec. I represent the applicant in a case. The case appears on page nine in the middle of the case. Case number 23525Z, application for a variation. We were otherwise ready to go forward today, except we got a call from the alderman on Wednesday and informed us that there were some people in the neighborhood who had some questions and advised us that she was planning to ask for a continuance today and hoping we'd meet with the neighbors and answer the questions, which of course, we're happy to do. The only thing we told her is that we were otherwise ready to go. And this is a variation actually that had been granted by the board a couple of years ago. We asked if it'd be possible to continue this one month, and she says she'd be able to put us in touch with the neighbors very quickly on this one. And I think she sent a letter also requesting that continuance.
Okay, so calendar number 23525Z will be continued to July 18, the 2:00 p.m. call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you very much.
Hello?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of NCA Properties LLC, case 23125S. It is a application for a special use to establish an indoor event venue. Some of the outstanding matters that were prevalent with DPD as well with the alderman have been solved. However, the client had to leave the country unexpectedly for a personal matter and could not be here for this hearing. Otherwise, I would have been here today. We're hoping to get a July spot next month, if possible.
Okay, so we're gonna have to do August for this one, but calendar number 23125S will be continued to August 15, the 2:00 p.m. call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you. Daniel Egan?
This is the one where they didn't have. They was, they were missing that.
Any other continuances or withdrawals?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Continuance for 4903 West Chicago Avenue for a special use license for indoor event venue under 50 people, 100 people.
Uh, so calendar number 18725S?
Yes.
Uh, 4903 West Chicago?
Yes.
Uh, who are you?
I am the applicant, Devana Apple.
And you're requesting a continuance?
No, no, no. Oh, it was continued from last month, I apologize.
Oh, oh, yeah, right. It's on the, it's on the calendar today. It's the last case on the call today.
It's you.
So we will hear it today, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay.
Any other continuances or withdrawals? All right, hearing none. Victor, go ahead and call the first case.
First case, 2725Z, South Landale.
Good morning.
Good afternoon. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Sure. For the record, my name is Whitney Smith. I am in-house counsel for Landale Christian Development Corporation, representing the applicant, Richard Towndale, who's executive director of Landale Christian Development Corporation, the entity that owns 1859 South Landale. Also, we have Dion Lucas, who's principal at Behave Architectural Services. So the applicant is seeking a variance for 1859 South Landale, a residential property in the North Landale area. It's an RT4 district in an effort to complete the gut rehab of the property displayed. So LCDC is a long-established organization in North Landale, 37 years of redevelopment, has done over $125 million in redevelopment in the community. So this project reflects that commitment to preserving the architectural legacy of the neighborhood and advancing its goal of delivering high-quality housing. The vision for this home is to create a warm and inviting restorative environment that offers the full range of modern amenities within the context of the historically rich, community-rooted design of the neighborhood. The design is heavily influenced by the historic nature of the community with respect to the gravestones that predominate the housing type in the neighborhood, and the primary goal is to preserve and enhance that, the home's original early 1900s character.
All right, thank you. For the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. They will be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board?
Just one question, just so I understand, we're not moving any of the exterior walls? This is just so that you can do the internal?
Yeah, we're not moving any exterior walls. This is so that we can replace the front stairs and the rear stairs in the way that they were originally designed.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, we'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Daniel Egan from Acosta Esger. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. The witnesses here today are Anna Alvarado, the property owner, as well as the architect, Tim Wilken. For the record, can you please state your name and your business address?
Anna Alvarado, 1443 West Hood Avenue, 60660.
Tim Wilken, architect, 1353 West Glen Lake. Uh, so the subject property is improved with a two-and-a-half-story frame house, with a basement, front yard enclosed frame porch, rear yard open porch, and two-car brick garage. The applicant proposes to renovate the property and add one ADU to the existing garage. The first floor layout of the garage will be divided in half to allow the ADU on the balance of the building. An attic will be located above the garage purely for storage purposes. To allow the proposed coach house, the applicant will eliminate one parking space. The hardship in this case is the physical condition of the subject parcel, the ADU ordinance, the residential parking ordinance, as well as the physical limitations of a family member. While the ADU is allowed on the subject site, the existing garage requires an applicant to reconfigure the layouts. One parking space will remain, but in order to accommodate for a family member with physical limitations, instead of having it on the second floor of the garage, it will be on the first floor, and thus the requirement for getting rid of one parking space.
Okay. For the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do. Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Fatikas, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Great, thank you. Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Pink's. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, John Downs Construction Incorporated. The applicant owns the subject property located again at 3149 North Sawyer. The subject lot is a triangular lot that lacks public, access to a public alley. The front property line, as we're treating it, is on Sawyer and North Avondale, which runs at an angle, functions as the rear of the lot. The property is vacant and unimproved today. The applicant's proposing to develop the property with a new three-story, seven-unit residential building. The irregular lot shape and lack of alley access triggers variations. In this case, we're asking for a front setback reduction from the required 6.27 feet to zero, and increase the off-street parking ratio for a transit serve location from four spaces to seven spaces. So we are able to maintain one-to-one parking for the development. And for the record, Chairman, the same project was presented to the board back in June of 2020. At that time, the only relief sought was the front setback. The full TSL ordinance had not gone into effect yet. While the relief was granted, the project did not move forward because of some of the uncertainty created by the pandemic, and then the variations lapsed. It's maybe fell to the back burner, but now it's back in front of us, and we're ready to move forward. The scope of the project has not changed. The design has not changed. It's the same, same concept. I do have both witnesses, again, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. John Downs, and our structural engineer, Mr. Michael Cox, to answer any questions you or the board members have.
Thank you. Do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would everyone plan to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Uh, once again, for the record, my name is Daniel Egan. I am an attorney with Acosta Esger, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. To my right is the architect, and to my left is the applicant. For the record, can you please state your name and your business address?
My name is David Casprak. My company's O'Kelly Casprak LLC. We're architects and interior designers. 940 West Adams Street, Chicago 60607.
Janice Webster. Address of the business is 2232 Rosco.
Okay. The, this case revolves around a special use to expand an existing packaged goods and liquor store. For context, this application was filed, there was one filed for and approved in 2023. However, due to financial and timing constraints, the permit for the construction for that application lapsed. We've come back here today to ask for the exact same thing with the exact same plans and seeking a special use.
For the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, for case 23325S, I just heard from the attorney. Alderman Mosley is requesting a continuance on this matter, and he was requesting a one month continuance to July. It's very hair salon.
Okay.
And he spoke to the attorney, the attorney was in agreement.
Okay, all right. So calendar number 23325S will be continued to July 18, the 2:00 p.m. call, and no further notice will be given.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mike Noonan with Foley and Lardner, 321 North Clark Street, Suite 3000 in Chicago, here on behalf of the applicant, Here to Stay Community Land Trust, or Here to Stay for short. To my far right, we've got applicant representative Kristen Horn, executive director of Here to Stay, and to my immediate right, Jaime Torres Carmona, registered architect and principal and founder of Canopy Architecture and Design.
Okay, for the witnesses, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor, go ahead and give us a brief overview.
Thank you. Here to Stay is here today seeking a variation to reduce the required front yard setback at 2430 North Artesian Avenue from 18.81 feet to 9.09 feet so that a front porch can be constructed. Here to Stay owns the land, and they've submitted this request with the permission of the current occupants and owners of the home, Andres Lopez and Elizabeth Malave. As you've seen in our packet, this has a sort of a long and sordid history with the front porch, and we're seeking this setback variation so that the residents of the home can have a stairs that lead to their front door.
Sure. For the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you, thank you so much. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and esteemed members of the board. For the record, my name is Sarah Barnes, and I'm a partner with the Law Offices of Gozdeki Telgirte Mericas and Bracato LLP. I am happy to be here this afternoon on behalf of the applicant, Mrs. Young Soon Rodriguez. And we also have our project manager, Victor Araho, with us. Adorno, I'm sorry, excuse me. Would you, oh, and with regard to a brief overview of the project, Mrs. Rodriguez bought the subject property, which is the only vacant lot on this subject block just over a year ago. And Mrs. Rodriguez owns a business in the community and also lives in the community for most of her life. So she really wanted to set up or invest in the community so that she can have a legacy for her family. So she purchased the property with the intention to build a single-family residence. This is on a, in a district, however, that is the predominance of the black district. So therefore, to maintain some more multifamily housing in the area, you are not allowed to do a single-family home on this particular block because predominantly multifamily. So instead of doing a single-family residence, she is now converting over to doing a two-unit building, a two-unit residential building at the subject site, which she is still going to live in, and she's gonna have the other unit for her adult son and his family. So it will be a true multi-generational residence. The reason we are here today is because now that it's a two-unit building, we do have to have secondary means of ingress and egress for each of the units. And in this case, due to the configuration of the floor plates within the building, we had to locate one of the secondary egress stairs along the side of the building instead of the back. And there are loud encroachments in the back and front, but not on the side. So the variation is for a reduction of the side yard setback, but it's not for the building wall. It's actually just for that open stair that's about 13 feet long and three feet in width. And it is open, and it's only about 12 feet in height, so there shouldn't be any, and that, it was intentionally done so to mitigate any interference with the adjacent properties. So with that, the hardship was that we were, again, for a single-family home, which is allowed by right, usually on this particular zoning lot, you're not required to do the multiple forms of ingress and egress, but in this instance, we did have to provide those secondary forms. So with that, I'm happy to move on to introducing.
Okay, you introduce them, I'll read.
Yeah, if you wanna go.
Yeah. All right, for the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good to see you.
All right, good afternoon. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Good afternoon, Karen Shon, on behalf of six, I'm sorry, of Kimball Daycare Center and Garden Incorporated. Today I have with me the president, Anush Varda Jr., and representative of the architectural firm, Chris Witchman. Today, we are seeking a variation in the form of a setback. The existing setback is 12.42, I'm sorry, the existing required setback is 12.42. We're seeking a reduction to 5.1. The project consists of construction of a addition to the existing structure located at 1636, 1638 North Kimball. The actual address of the addition is 1640 North Kimball. My client is, has been operating a early learning center since 2004, and the existing, I'm sorry, the addition will allow for the service, to provide early learning service to 32 children in addition to the existing, the existing population that they serve.
Okay. For the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Number 24125S, 1541 East 87th Street.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. You wanted sympathy points, you got it. Yeah. You wanted sympathy points, you got it. Um, all right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Z B A. My name is Mara Georges, and I represent the applicant in this matter. With me and to my right is Ms. Takara Hill, the owner of the property and the applicant, uh, who, the proposed operator of the site. Ms. Hill is a licensed and experienced hairstylist, and a hair salon is permitted in B districts as of right. There is a trigger for a special use if it's located within a thousand feet of another salon. The trigger, uh, is triggered, applies in this case, and as a result, we seek a special use. Alderman Harris and zoning administrator Murphy have both given letters of support. Uh, Ms. Hill, if you were to testify, would you testify in, in conformance with all of the information in your application?
Yes.
And, um, the materials with the, submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yeah.
Okay, they'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board?
Thank you all.
We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
It's okay. That was, that was a fall. That was a real fall.
Yeah, she's like, she's messing with theirs. What? Who is it?
He else falls, we're gonna have to clap it out.
You have to dress him.
I'm, boy, I, that, that's how I noticed that.
Not two in a row.
How y'all doing today?
Good, good. All right. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, are you an attorney?
No, I am a rep from Alderman Mosley's office.
Oh, perfect. Okay. All right. Well, let's start, um, with the applicant.
Yes.
Is that you? Could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Larry E. Roberts Junior, one zero four five six South Halsted Street.
Okay, and what brings you here today?
Um, just getting a, um, the zoning, you wanna, so architect right here.
Sure. So we're, if you could, uh, before you, um, start, so we've got it for the, uh, court reporter, uh, your name and address, please?
So Kevin Whittier, four two-two East Forty-Fifth Place. We're seeking a special use to expand the, uh, existing beauty and barber college that currently exists at one oh four fifty-six South Halsted. And so we're just seeking a special use to, uh, build a, a one-story addition to the building and, uh, still operate during the same function.
So the, the, the barber shop training school is, is going well and, and, uh, and you need the additional space. Is that basically what's happening?
Yes, sir. We've outgrown it.
Excellent, excellent. And, um, let's hear from, uh, oh, actually, um, are the materials submit for both of you, are the materials submitted with the hearing packet still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, great. They'll be admitted into the record. And, um, would you like to say something on behalf of the alderman?
Yes, um, Alderman Mosley, he is in support of this expansion.
Okay, great. Um, are there any questions from the board?
Is, is the reason that they're here for a special use because they're expanding this, the footprint?
Yes, but it's an existing special use.
Exactly.
Personal service.
Right, so. But they're, okay.
Yeah.
But the reason they need the special use is because they're expanding.
They're expanding the use, yeah. Every, every time you expand it, you've gotta get it. Yeah. Um, okay, great. Um, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you. Um, so, uh, just, uh, you're hearing objection of, of this matter? Okay, um, so the, just so you know, the way it'll work is, um, once we finish with the applicant, then, uh, we'll bring it over to you and you'll get, uh, two minutes to voice your concerns. Um, and, uh, and the board, uh, will ask questions if necessary. Uh, so with that, uh, counselor, please give us a brief overview of the, uh, matter and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Tyler Manik. I'm attorney of Shane Banks Kenyon Schwartz. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I'm joined by Paul Leungus, who's the applicant, and Victor Drazko, who's the project architect. Uh, the subject property is improved with a three-and-a-half-story, three-dwelling unit, uh, building. It's currently vacant. It's a currently illegal, non-conforming building, uh, in the sense that it has three dwelling units, an R S three. It has an existing, um, non-conforming north-side setback that's on the property line. And it's got, has non-conforming floor area ratio issues because the basement is more than fifty percent above grade. So it counts against the floor area. Uh, Paul's looking to activate this building that's been long vacant. He is seeking to do an eleven-foot or eleven-foot rear addition that is gonna be following, uh, the north-side setback, um, which triggers the relief that we're seeking here today. Um, we did meet, uh, with both adjacent neighbors on the north and south side. They're supportive. We did speak with the aldermen who didn't have an issue with this, and we did work closely with the neighbor across the street, who is gonna be this gentleman's neighbor. Uh, one of the things that that neighbor did request is that we withdraw the application for the front setback relief for the rooftop doghouse. And we did submit the plans to the zoning board, which are part of the record now. That eliminates the rooftop deck.
Okay.
So we're withdrawing that request. Um.
Can I ask a question on that? Um, does that, do we, are, are any of these, um, applications being withdrawn as a result of the no longer having the front setback requests?
Well, a portion of an application is, is the relief, and I'm gonna quote it, it's the relief to.
The two thirty-nine?
It is, I don't know the number. Yes, it's two thirty, it's two thirty-nine where it says, reduce the front setback of the rooftop stair enclosure from twenty feet to fifteen point six seven feet. That's no longer on the plans and no longer requested. Everything else is.
Okay, so, uh, so calendar number two thirty-nine twenty-five Z still stands with the, uh, exception of the words, reduce the front setback of the rooftop stair enclosure from twenty feet to fifteen point, uh, six seven feet. Uh, that is withdrawn.
Correct.
Okay.
So, and in some pump, Paul's seeking to activate this building. His son will reside in the one unit and his daughter will reside in the other unit. And then the ground floor unit will be rented to your, um, standard tenant.
Okay. Um, all right, for the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Great. They will be admitted into the record. Are there any questions, uh, from the board before we go, uh, to public comment?
Just, just for clarification, it's the, the elimination of the, of the front, of the request to reduce the front setback. There's still going to be a rooftop deck, right, or not at all?
Totally eliminated.
Okay, so is there an amendment needed for forty as well or no?
I guess, yeah, I, I guess the, um, uh, what, what Commissioner Staley is, is pointing out is, actually, if you, if you look at, um, both two forty and, uh, two thirty-eight, there's references to a new rooftop deck.
You, you can amend the district and eliminate new rooftop deck.
Okay, okay. Right, okay.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah, so just for clarity, the, the, the new rooftop deck is, is, is eliminated from these app, from these three applications.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions before we go to public comment? All right, let's, um, go to public comment. Sir, uh, please give us your name and then we'll put, uh, two minutes up on the board and you can, uh, tell us your concerns.
Sure, thank you. My name is Paul Dean. I live across the street from this building at thirty-four thirty-seven North Bell. My wife and I have lived there and raised our family there for the past twenty-two years. And we oppose this variance for the setback to be removed from the current, from where it is right now, according to the ordinance, where it needs to be, where they would like it to stay at the property line. This is a, an element in our neighborhood that has been changed because of decades of urban planning that have said the best use of and the best configuration for houses is to have that setback. And that setback sets a precedent, if it is allowed here, for other buildings that are similar in the neighborhood that are on the property line. And we do not agree that that should be allowed. They can still do the extension. They can still expand the building, but just follow the current ordinance.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, are there any questions from the board now?
Just, just, just to clarify, your, your concern is about the front setback?
The, the, any, any setback.
Okay.
The, the front or the back, any, any setback forms some sort of precedence for the neighborhood where that's allowed, and we disagree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Forty-four twenty-five Z, forty-five twenty-five Z, twenty-two thirty-seven West Rosco.
Okay, uh, sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Timothy Barton with the Office of Thomas H. Raines Attorney at Law LLC. I'm here, uh, today on behalf of the applicant, Rosco Bell Properties LLC. In the matter, the zoning variation sought for the property located at twenty-two thirty-seven West Rosco Street, Chicago, Illinois. Uh, the subject property is located in a B two-two neighborhood mixed-use district in the Thirty-second Ward. It all, and also lies within a subarea called the Rosco Street Special Character Overlay District. The applicant is proposing to construct a new four-story, six-unit building with an attached twelve-car garage at grade level. We have one witness today, Mr. Pop. Will I proceed with, uh, testimony?
Uh, no. Um, sir, do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. They will be admitted into the record. Um, what's the hardship for this, for this one?
Do you want to know? Uh, you could, uh, soil conditions. Um, it, the current soil conditions in the Rosco area, particularly, uh, on that street are, uh, the P S F of it is quite, quite low. It's probably around fifteen hundred P S F. And to be able to build a typical building, you need about three thousand P S F of, uh, compactive strength. So the, uh, it's traditionally, um, you could have a twenty-four-inch, uh, wide footing, but on these, we had to go with the footings approximately about five feet, five inches wide and a ton of rebar. And most of the, most of the components of it were the elevator shaft and core are, are just monolithic slabs.
Okay. Um, the, the, the plans for this matter, are they, are they final or, or no?
Yes.
The plans are final?
Yes.
Okay. Um, are these going to be rentals or condos?
They're gonna be condos. Uh, I've addressed, uh, uh, Alderman's wagga specs concern that certainly, uh, in our rules and bylaws, there won't be any, uh, Airbnb or shared hotel, uh, allowed. So everything is, uh, unit, uh, unit all, no room, uh, rooms allowed to be rented.
So that'll be written into the condo documents?
Yes.
Are there any other questions from the board? All right, we'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-two twenty-five S, forty-seven twenty-five S, forty-eight twenty-five S, thirty-three hundred West Franklin.
Good question, though. Oh, wow. Almost there.
Okay, uh, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Counselor, uh, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Sure. Um, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, thank you for your time today. My name is Timothy Barton and with the Office of Thomas H. Raines Attorney at Law. I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant, C N R Holdings Grow LLC in connection with the proposed special uses for the property located at thirty-three hundred, uh, West Franklin Boulevard, which is currently zoned M two dash two. The, this application represents the culmination of more than a year of engagement with the various city departments as well as previous hearings before the board itself, before the zoning board of appeals. We began as a, um, just with distinct applications to permit cannabis infusion and cannabis processing, um, a year ago, and they were approved at that time. Uh, but it's now evolved into a consolidated effort to have a unified operation with the processing, the infusion, as well as craft growing under one integrated plan. The facility, uh, will be operated by Mr. Martin Jarboe, sitting here to my right. He is the sole owner and license holder of C N R Holdings Grow LLC. He is, uh, present right here along with our expert team, including our appraiser, land planning consultant, security advisor. Um, and the property is owned by the Coon family, who are also represented here. We're not aware of any objectors. Alderman Burnett has been briefed on this application and is in support. Um, so we have, uh, six witnesses here on behalf of the applicant. As I said, Martin Jarboe, our security consultant, Daniel Farrell, land planning consultant, George Kissel, uh, M A I designated appraiser, Terry O'Brien, uh, the project architect, Todd Main, and the project manage, manager, uh, Merritt Coon.
Okay, um, for all of the witnesses, do. Okay, for all of the witnesses, do all of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Thank you. They will be admitted into the record. I do want to have a little bit of a conversation about the recommendations from the Department of Planning and Development, because they are quite detailed. First of all, Mr. Jarboe, have you had an opportunity to read these recommendations?
No, no. Actually, yes, I have, but.
Oh, yeah, speaking to the microphone.
You could pull it closer if it's easier.
Yes, I have.
Okay. I want to turn to Nancy Radzovich from the Department of Plan and Development. If you could shed some further light on, basically, the question that I have right now is, is these conditions are quite extensive, so if you could explain?
Absolutely. Nancy Radzovich, I am an assistant commissioner with the Bureau of Zoning. Do you need me to swear in?
Yes. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, these conditions, obviously, from what you can tell, are much more extensive. I think this is the first time since I've been here, we had to go two pages on every single recommendation memo. The bulk of the, the first four conditions are pretty standard for what we do with these types of uses. So, you know, we refer to the plans that are submitted at the ZBA. We talk about the other uses that are covered by this special use, as well as any associated special use. We also always specifically say that they can't do the retail sales, because that's not allowed, right? So, and then we, we make sure that first and foremost, the special use is granted solely to this applicant. So those first four conditions are the standard conditions. Whenever we have a cannabis infuser, a processor, or grower, we often use two additional conditions, which you did on the past applications for the infuser and processor for this site, where we reference that the applicant is required to provide the final plans and final odor control plan, and all of those need to go through a review with the Department of Public Health at the time of building permit. And what that does is, because the plans that are filed at the time of ZBA tend to be more general, that allows health to not only review the plans for compliance with what was approved by the ZBA, but it also allows them to go through their air pollution control permit process, which is a requirement under the municipal code. So that's in addition to the ZBA process. When these original special uses were granted for the infuser and processor last year, permits were issued and they did not get those, they did not go through the review for health. So what we needed to do is reinforce additional conditions. So there's twofold, kind of two levels of conditions there. And I'm going to turn this over to Mike Enos, because he's with the Department of Public Health, and he can explain a little bit more. But he went on an inspection, looked at what had been installed. He wrote up a memorandum, which is also referenced in your, excuse me, in the rec memo. And there's certain things that they expect to see, and they kind of wanted to lay these out a little bit more detailed since, since these things were missed with the, the first portion. And I think there's added concerns, because growers tend to have much more potential for odor issues.
Okay, great. So, sir, could you state your name and role, please?
My name is Michael Enos. I am the supervising environmental engineer or the air pollution control and asbestos control unit of the Office of Environmental Permitting Inspection within Chicago Department of Public Health.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. All right, please proceed.
Okay, so normally, what happens when an applicant submits through the standard plan review process within the Department of Buildings, the project managers route the application through the different disciplines as they are marked on the intake form. And in the, in the initial application that the applicant's filed, he had marked that there was no air pollution control regulated equipment on this application, even though I think it had already been before the board. When they do it properly, then the environmental review takes place as part of the rest of the building permitting process. And we go through our revisions, and we go through our requests for specifications of pollution control equipment, and, you know, the, the assignment of special conditions as part of what, you know, what this use is going to be. And the permit we're talking about is required prior to installation of any regulated equipment or area. And this is all part of the municipal code, section 11, 4, 6, 20A, where regulated equipment or area is defined in the previous 11, 4, 6, 10, section of definitions. And so we go through and we examine all the equipment they plan on installing. And once we approve it, we issue the permit, then they are allowed to install it. They can't install it before they obtain the permit. Subsequently, once we approve, then inspect it, should we choose to do so, then we allow the applicant to obtain a certificate of operation, and this is part of code section 11, 4, 6, 60. And with that in hand, that allows them to begin their manufacture, to operate the facility. And in the previous building permits that were issued, that entire, that entire process was short-circuited or bypassed.
Okay.
Or at least to the best of my knowledge, I mean.
Okay. Because no approvals were, were had from the air, air pollution control?
Yes, specifically, no air pollution control permits were issued for any of the regulated equipment or areas that were listed within the application.
Okay. Was that, Counselor, was that with the prior owner? Because did the owner?
Right, that was with Big City Ventures. Big City Ventures Infuser LLC. They got the, they got approval for the infusion operation in February of 2023. And based on that, yeah, the permit application was taken out.
Okay. And, and, and who went forward with the, the, the build-out and didn't actually do the things that were required with regard to the air pollution?
So my understanding is that there was an expediter working on this. And, you know, as Mr. Reno says, or maybe I'm just filling in one piece, that a permit was issued by the Department of Buildings, but which, you know, our clients, not our client, I guess it was Ventures, Big City Ventures, which they thought was sufficient. But they didn't, they didn't realize that there was a whole nother aspect to this with the air pollution control. So I can't tell you why that is, I think.
Okay.
Under the best of circumstances, we assume that they just didn't know. They just assumed everything was okay.
Okay. Mr. Jarboe, so you've had an opportunity to read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendations for calendar numbers, 246, 25S, 247, 25S, and 248, 25S?
Yes, sir.
And you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in this letter, in these letters?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
This is now enforced through inspections based on the conditions that are being proposed by the department?
I think I can probably explain, because we've spent a lot of time digging through the past building permit process. What happened is, as you may recall, and I believe you were on the, the board at that time, this, this project has kind of been moving forward in phases. So the applicant first came forward with just an infuser. Then they came back with a new applicant, I believe, for the infuser and the processor. Ultimately, they got that approval for this infuser and processor that was part of this original building permit and had started to build that out. And I don't want to misspeak, so I may turn to Tim, but I believe it was at that point that the previous applicant left. But it was my understanding that actually the property owner was, was actually working on the permit as kind of like the construction manager. So it was, it was kind of, you know, everyone on the team, from our understanding, and again, I'll let Tim kind of clarify as he needs to. So it looks like most of the work that was on their plans for the infuser and processor, which was never submitted for review and never reviewed by health or approved by health, all of that was installed. There are holds on those permits to allow for two things. It allowed for them to come back, because they obviously have to get a new operator and get a new special use. But also, because that equipment was installed, it was not installed in compliance with both the special use conditions and with the air quality, or the, I'm sorry, air pollution permit provisions of the municipal code. All of those occupancies and everything's been put on hold. Based on our understanding, when health went in there and did inspections, they noted, they did not get to inspect all the equipment, but they noted that some of the equipment is not what they would have approved. So that equipment is going to have to be removed and replaced. And all of that is in the, the recommendation comments that we cited in the, the recommendation memo. So anything under the original infuser processor is likely going to be more of removal and replacement and altering of the existing system. And then anything under the grower is all going to be new installation. Is that right? Is that?
Yes, that's, that, that's correct. The uses have been shifting from, as, as I was getting communication from you guys, the uses would drift from, it's, it's an infuser, it's, it's a processor. It's, it's, and then when they, when, when it came to be, become a grower, this is an entirely different animal than the other, the other two uses. And the entire facility is treated as a, as a facility. So when you're a grower, now you are, that's what you do, regardless of whatever, whatever else you're doing, you are at the grower standard. And the site is of particular concern to CDPH due to its proximity to two schools.
Okay, but my question was, thank you, it's clearer as we're getting there, but my question was, there are instructions now that are embedded in the report from DPD that include the issues with, with the Department of Health. How is that, and what's the process for enforcing that? Since there's already some permitting that's going on, and so you want to, how is the process to avoid the problem that you've had previously?
Oh. What we're asking for is standard for every use. So pretty much any, pretty much any application, building permit application, I should say, pretty much any building permit application that goes through the standard plan review process, it's likely going to have regulated equipment or areas. What we consider regulated equipment or areas would be, it's most often going to be combustion equipment. And the combustion equipment that we see most frequently are furnace, gas-fired furnaces, which are rooftop units, and any boiler, which we.
Yeah, you didn't answer my question.
Yes.
Are there going to be other set procedures from inspections at the appropriate time, like there is with any other building?
Oh, yes, yes.
And since some of this has to be done before it's installed, is there something that is a trigger for the, for the building department so that you, so that they can't proceed to the next step with whatever they need for their permitting until the health department acts?
Yes. So I'm glad you asked. That's, so what we do is review the, we review the drawings, right? And the drawings show the regulated equipment or area. And then we issue the permit to install, okay? And then once it's installed, then we inspect it. The CDPH, the same as like the mechanical group might, the same as the.
The same way they would with the building from a calling it for the inspectors to come.
I'm sorry.
So the work, just like it does with any other construction, where the, each step, you have to call in the appropriate inspection.
Exactly, yeah, and I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry for getting so in the weeds.
To be clear, and I want to make sure.
Yeah, so I think that's nine here, right? Like, so no secure, no certificates of occupancy are going to be issued, or operations started until.
Yeah, but this is, is, it can't wait for that if, if what they're saying, and as I heard and read when I read that, there's some, there's, there's, some of this has to be inspected before, before it's installed. So they can't wait till occupancy, because by then it's already there. That's why I was asking.
And make sure that you speak into the mic, because Katie can't get that.
I was just clarifying, it was a different issue. I, I just want to make sure that the applicant
Right.
understands what we're talking about. That's all.
Sir, you wanted to say something?
You clarified.
Yeah.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Todd Main, main architecture. We're going to be going back for a permit process for the processing and infusion side of this, either a revision to the existing permit or another permit. Then that will go to the Department of Health for their initial review.
Okay.
And then once they go through their review and everything is approved, then we move forward.
Okay, I got, thank you.
Sure.
And I guess the thing that maybe what Commissioner Schiller is, is confused about, which at least I'm confused about, is how did this not happen the first time? I mean, how did they not go through the, the proper channels to make sure? I mean, they still had the conditions the last time with regard to the air pollution control equipment. So how did, how did everything get installed without approval?
I will say, I, obviously, I am not part of the building department. But as I understand how the process works, is a lot of it is honestly tied to whomever is filing the permits. And from what we understand, in this case, the expediter who was hired to file these permits checked the boxes and said, no health review, no regulated equipment, no nothing. So Department of Buildings is not going to double, is not going to challenge that, because it's, it's up to whomever's filing the application to, to provide that application. So what we have, and I believe both DPD and maybe health, we've put holds on that initial permit right now. So, so that's one thing in the, the, the building department system. So we've got holds on there until they, until they rectify that. But I think by having, as wordy as it is, by having these very detailed conditions and making sure that everyone now who's, who's represented on the team is aware of what the issues were and, and the right path forward, we're hopeful that the right processes will go through. Because obviously, there's, there's obviously other recourses that, that can be done. But, you know, I, I, I think we've got pretty much everything covered in, in all those details.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I, I guess just my one brief one, just to confirm that under the old ownership or the original ownership that applied for the permit or with the expediter, no one here was involved? Is that correct? Or is that, am I mistaken at that?
I believe that's true.
Okay.
Well, all these guys were here last time.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
Merritt Coon, for the record.
Yeah.
The ownership group of the tenant is no longer involved, and the expediter who was in charge of getting the permits through are no longer involved. But we.
Yeah, they should, they should be fired.
They were, they, we, we fired those expeditors, we're not planning on using them. The ownership of the building is still the same, Coon family, I'm representing them. We still have our same witnesses, we still use our same lawyer. We still use the same architect, so those people are still involved, but as far as. We still use the same architect, so those people are still involved, but as far as the process of going through the health, as far as the process of going through the permitting and where we had that issue with the Health Department not getting review, all of those people are no longer involved.
So you're start, okay, so there's a commitment to start over and ensure that that we're following the proper process.
We want to go through this the right way and we we understand that, so.
Do you have an expediter?
Yeah.
Okay. Going forward.
Yeah, and they they understand about all the process that has to go through health and they, they're committed to going through those correct processes moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the board? Anything else? From DPD? No?
What what we're requiring in terms of this process is no different from anybody else. Everybody who has regulated equipment or area is supposed to go through an environmental review. It's at this point, a lot of these recommendations would have surfaced during that process, but now we're ahead of that process. So that, so this isn't, this isn't anything unusual, I just want you to know that.
Understood. Okay.
And I just point out, actually, we had a very constructive call the other day with Mike and Todd Main, our architect, and you know, just Mike answered a lot of questions about permitting process. So, you know, we're clear how this is going to go forward.
Okay.
Our office.
And just so I've got just so I've got this clear, all right, so Mr. Kuhn, you're you you represent the owner of the property.
I'm the building manager.
Okay, okay, and Mr. Jarboe here is going to is the operator.
Correct, operator slash tenant, correct.
Okay, so Mr. Jarboe, are you going to be handling the, you're going to be handling the day-to-day operations? Okay. Okay. With that, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
S P A twenty eight seven twenty five S forty nine O three West Chicago Avenue.
I understand that.
The officer here or?
Yeah. They say that this is a But there is always And it often is problems over there.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. For the, you're the applicant?
Yes.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Davana Appleton, forty nine O three West Chicago Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six five one.
Okay, and who's the gentleman to your right?
My husband Kendrick.
Kendrick Singleton.
Okay, and you're also going to testify, you're here in support?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Before we begin, I think I do actually, I usually don't read these Department of Plan and Development recommendations, but I do want to read this one because it's unusual, it's it's a denial as opposed to an approval, and I think it might help us with the conversation that's about to to happen. So let me just start by reading this, this is the Department of Plan and Development's recommendation for calendar number one eighty seven twenty five S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends denial of the proposed indoor event venue. The proposed use is adjacent to predominantly single-family residential neighborhoods to the south and north of this commercial corridor, which includes primarily lower-intensity neighborhood commercial uses, retail, service, offices, et cetera, and religious assembly uses along this one to two-block stretch of Chicago Avenue. Based on documentation received from the Chicago Police Department, the proposed indoor event venue may have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood as the operator has a history of holding events at this location, which have resulted in public nuisance complaints related to noise and parking in general public safety and continuing to host events even after issuance of citations by Business Affairs and Consumer Protection. The proposed indoor event venue will not be in the public interest as the intensity of the use is not in character with the surrounding area. Further, the proposed use is not compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics such as hours of operation, noise, and traffic generation, as the police records show a history of public nuisance calls and complaints occurring well after midnight and extending in the early morning hours. Based on the foregoing, it is the department's recommendation that the proposal to establish an indoor event venue be denied as it is not in the interest of public convenience and may have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or community, is not compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics and does not promote pedestrian safety and comfort. Okay, so we're obviously here about an event space, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and before we start into questions into the specifics, first, with regard to the hearing packet, do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Correct, yes.
Thank you, they will be admitted into the record. I can see we've got an officer over here and some others, before we get to them, I I want to hear from you first. So because we've all reviewed the record, we've, you know, we've reviewed your submission, we've reviewed the Chicago Police Department's submission that they that they have put in in opposition to this matter. And so there's, there's, there's questions. When did you start operating this event space?
February first, two thousand and twenty one is, it was initially a boutique. And unfortunately, due to COVID and the increase of online sales, I had to pivot the business. I had freshly had a lease and I came up with a plan B to host events.
Okay, and and when did it go from a from a boutique to an event space?
I will say the second year, twenty twenty two.
Okay. And when you turned it into an event space, did you know that you needed a special use permit to operate that event space?
After I received the visit from the B A C P, that's when I had known of the license that I needed to have.
And I want to say that from the file that the first time you got a visit from B A C P was in October of two thousand and twenty three, is that correct?
Around that time, correct.
Okay. And when you got the visit from B A C P in October of two thousand and twenty three, that was when you understood that you needed a special use permit to operate the event space?
Correct.
Okay, and once you knew in October of two thousand and twenty three that you needed the special use permit, when did you begin the, when did you submit an an application for a special use?
Well, I found out that when I went to the business office, it wasn't that simple to apply for a special use license, so it had to get architects involved, contractors, make sure that the business was zoned for what I was trying to do, so it was a it was a process.
And when did you begin the process to submit a special use application?
In October of two thousand and twenty three. So I hired the architect, the contractors, and of course, all the processing had took his time with permits and all of that fun stuff, so just going through the motions and I had to pretty much wait till that everything went through.
The 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 event space that you have is for, it looks like it's for all kinds of of different events. It could be, I, how about you tell me all the different kinds of events that that you have at the event space?
It is an event space that could be used for the community, what I've been using it for, it could be used for small gatherings like repass, baby showers, birthday parties, pop-up shops, seminars, hair classes, and pretty much Yep, pink parties. Pretty much any particular event that you can kind of come up with, you can create your own decorative style and you can bring it to life.
Okay. Okay, and at the event space, you you might have a DJ?
Correct.
Might have alcohol?
Correct.
Food?
Correct.
Music?
Correct.
Okay.
It's the hourly rate what they rent it out for and they basically do everything pretty much what their plans to do as as far as a party and then after that, then everybody leaves.
Okay. And the, what were the hours for the events that you were keeping in two thousand and twenty two, two thousand and twenty three?
It was midnight, but I will admit some parties wanted to go a little longer because of everyone was having a good time, so that's where the discrepancies came in.
And it it looked to me from from one of the videos that I think it was submitted by CPD, it looked like one of those parties was an outdoor party?
So what had happened was with the with the weather being nice in Chicago, we got a little excited and brought the music because smoking is not allowed in the inside. So it's like, oh, if we could just bring the music outside, but that's when not even having a neighbor or anybody else in mind about the disturbance, it was just tunnel focused on just having a good time.
How many outdoor events have you had at the space?
It was probably about five.
When did you? I mean, you 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 get you find out from B A C P in October of two thousand and twenty three that you need the permit, but when was the first time that you ever received a complaint from anyone about the the space, whether it be related to noise or
Never received a complaint personally. Not to my face, never.
Once you got the the notice from B A C P in October of two thousand and twenty three, why did you continue, well, strike that. After you get the notice in October of two thousand and twenty three, did you continue to operate the event space?
Because when I went to the hearing for the the fine that B A C P gave me, the judge at that hearing gave me the fine, once I paid it, they said, well, it looks like you like having parties, get the license that you need, and I said, I am on a path to getting them. So that was pretty much the conversation.
Okay, but you did understand that without the license, you were not supposed to be operating, correct?
Correct. I only proceeded because I'll admit business had was so good that so many people had booked up events and there was no way that I could pay them back. So I was like, I know I'm going to take a risk of the fines, but it was it had grown popular really fast. And that's why I felt I have to go through with this license because this is something that's needed.
But you see the problem that that causes.
I do, I do indeed. And even in my application and a hearing packet, I was revising on how I was going to run it differently. Because now I know I did it the wrong way, so I want to right the wrongs and stop it at the respectable time of midnight, which means eleven thirty for the patrons, but they'll have, you know, to get everybody out and shortening up occupancy, making sure when contracts are signed, there will not be more than fifty people because now with going through the zoning and everything with the architect, it's fifty-four people comfortably, that won't be a safety hazard, so now that we know moving forward.
Have you, because I did see in the hearing packet, there were references to you, I think the the phrase was installing, quote, soundproofing techniques, have you? What do you mean by that?
So it's really all about the the speakers that, you know, because some, being a DJ, I found out that some people, some speakers are really powered and, you know, they do the job. But now, moving forward, there will be the moderate speakers was the inside and no outside functions at all will go on.
All right, are there any other questions for the applicant before we go? Actually, we'll 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 talk to the supporter next, but do you have any questions?
I just have, I do have one more, make sure I understand the the history, I appreciate you walking us through that. Is it right that there was also a closure order issued to you all in December of two thousand and twenty four?
Correct.
And what was your understanding of that order and what it required?
It was the understanding that when I learned of Ms. Crane, the residents on the next block were pretty upset.
But did you understand that that order meant that you couldn't be in that building? Had to be close?
No. I lived there as well.
Did you understand that you weren't supposed to have, that that was another reason why you weren't supposed to host people there?
I mean, now I know, but at the intensity of it, I didn't because every time that I would get the fine, you know, it would just be kind of the repeated process.
And you're, you still have a lease, right? You don't own this building.
Correct.
What's your relationship with the owner of the building?
We're in chess, I'm a tenant and he's the owner.
Have you discussed seeking this special use with the owner?
Absolutely.
And did the owner sign your special use application? Did you see them sign it?
Yeah.
Bring it to him?
Yes.
Okay.
We had got it. I'm sorry, we was ready to get it notarized at the courtesy exchange, but it didn't take a notary to do it.
Okay, and so it's your testimony that the owner is supportive of this?
Absolutely.
I have one question. So my understanding is from your testimony that once you received notification from B A C P that you didn't have the proper license and that you had to seek the proper license, the reason that you went forward with continuing to operate a place, an indoor place of amusement was that you had already booked dates for existing clients to have their parties at this at this location. Did you continue to book additional?
No, they were only the the ones that was booked already.
Okay, and then, so since that point, have there been other bookings that you've accepted?
Although I did get excited from last month's hearing, thinking that everything was going to go well, I'd scheduled like a grand opening and all that good stuff, but once everything didn't go well, I took that down and I don't even promote it on my social media no more.
Okay. Sir, did you, did you want to say anything in support of the application? Go ahead, just speaking to the Go ahead, just speaking into the microphone so the court reporter can get it.
I mean, it, it hasn't been any, you know, real issues or anything going on around there. It's just people like to party and have fun. And it's just that the community is, is a good community, but we haven't done anything wrong as far as I'm concerned.
Well, although we did um, host a community meeting so we could get like concerns or just wanna hear from the residents. We wanted to talk about ideas, maybe moving forward in the future. And um, the residents that did show up, they said that they had no problem with it. And even one of the residents said, oh, my sister actually used the place and my nephew actually used the place. And when we put individual invitations in everybody's mailbox and the commander was invited to that meeting and he said he would come, but he didn't. And um, and I know that they have been receiving calls and stuff, but we just really wanted to show them a different side and, and move forward and do things the right way. And that's why I just was fighting so hard to be here.
Well, I think, you know, having a community meeting was a good idea. I, 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 I do agree, I, I, you did it backwards though. I mean, you just, you just really went backwards by starting the business, not getting, not going through the proper channels and, and then continuing to operate the business after you knew you weren't supposed to. Those are all real, real problems. I mean, I, it seems to me, just from talking with you, that you've, you've got a talent for events. Um, but you gotta go through it the right way. I, I don't know what's gonna happen at, at the end of this hearing, but, but, you know, whether it's, it's, it's this event space or it's another event space, the next time you do this, you have to go through the proper channels and do it the right way.
Lesson learned, I promise.
Um, all right, let's um, let's go to, oh, oh.
Mr. Chairman, could I just do one clarification? I, I wasn't intending to testify, but um, within the packet and the information we received from B A C P.
Sure, uh, again, for the record, if you could just uh, state your name and role?
Of course, Nancy Razovich, Assistant Commissioner with the Bureau of Zoning and the Department of Planning and Development.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you, go ahead.
Um, just wanted to uh, for clarifications, that one of the um, cease and desist that we had received from B A C P was actually dated four, three, twenty twenty-one. And it should have been in your packet.
I don't remember seeing that one in the, in the file. Do you um, so I am, I'm, I'm looking at what appears to be a uh, and I'll show it to you in a second, uh, but it looks like uh, in order to cease and desist, that was from April third of twenty twenty-one. Do you have a recollection of a cease and desist order in April of twenty twenty-one for uh, renting an event space for a fee and providing entertainment, including but not limited to a live DJ?
Mm-hmm, I don't recollect that, but um, I'm not here to deny it as well.
Okay, all right. Oh, it was in the file, okay, all right, I'm, I must have missed it. Um, it, it apparently, um, Commissioner Staley is telling me that this is in the file. I just, I, I didn't remember seeing it. But yeah, it's uh, it's like it was investigator Richard Ruff uh, back in April, on April third of twenty twenty-one. Um, okay, all right, what we're gonna do now is we are going to hear um, from the uh, people that are here in objection uh, to this matter. Um, so uh, I think we'll start with um, the commander. Uh, uh, sir, if you could uh, state your name and role, please?
My name is Carlin Morse, C A R L I N, last name Morse, M O R S E. I'm currently the commander of the fifteenth district, that's the Austin District, fifty-seven oh one, West Madison, Chicago, Illinois.
And, and we do have, um, you were the, the one who submitted the PowerPoint uh, slides and the um, the videos, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, um, uh, and, and that is based on your uh, investigation of the property at forty-nine oh three West Chicago?
That is correct.
Okay, um, we are going to admit that into the record, uh, so it will be part of the official record for this matter. Um, we obviously don't need you to, to, to go slide by slide and, 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 and tell us uh, what's in there because we've all seen it already.
Yes.
Um, but um, what can you tell us about um, the complaints that uh, that CPD has received related to this property?
Yes, uh, we've received many complaints regarding public safety and uh, the location at forty-nine oh three West Chicago being a public nuisance. We submitted several case reports which demonstrate violence stemming from this location, such as uh, persons with weapons, such as persons shot, such as large gatherings. Which, what this does, it creates a problem with uh, safety in the community because it's a drain on police resources and it um, clogs up the street and it creates violence. It creates an unsafe community and this tends to spread and create more problems in our communities. So the citizens of Austin have complained to me numerous times at all domestic meetings and they've made it known that this is something that they cannot tolerate. So for the Chicago Police Department, fifteenth district, it represents a serious public safety concern as well as a problem with uh, being a public nuisance at this location. And it, and it's done so since my tenure there, which is since August twenty twenty-three. And even prior to me in twenty twenty-one, as you demonstrated earlier, it's something that's been persistent, ongoing and that has not stopped due to our interventions. It still hasn't affected this location and what it's done.
Okay, so the CPD has been to the property on multiple occasions to, to shut it down?
Sir, we have a large gathering car where I paid twelve officers overtime just to focus on this one location of forty-nine oh three West on Chicago. And uh, you don't have to look at all the slides because I believe there are seventy-two slides. But if you will just show the first, let's say, six or seven slides, I can walk you through the calls to service, the case reports, as well as the other issues that is presented. So you can really see for yourself. So this is the front, frontal view of forty-nine oh three West Chicago Avenue. Can you go to the second slide, please? So since uh, January twenty twenty-four, thirty-one, December twenty twenty-four, we've had a one shooting incident within a five-hundred foot radius. Can you go to the next slide, please? Uh, we've had twenty-nine all crime incidents from January twenty twenty-four to December twenty twenty-four. And when you look in the right-hand column, you see the crime, you see the crimes. Next slide, please.
That happened there?
Uh, 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 it's, you'll, you'll have an opportunity to, to speak more.
So this is all crime incidents. We uh, we did intervene, we, we worked with uh, B A C P in order to get this individual uh, individual to stop the crime and it did. And we saw a decrease, but they started back up and that's reflected in these stats. Next slide, please. So this is a location from January uh, first twenty twenty-four through December first twenty twenty-four. This is the entire year and this is forty-nine oh three uh, West Chicago. We've had three hundred eighty-seven calls to service, the top ones being parking and music disturbances that stem for forty-nine oh three. Next slide, please.
A- a- actually, could, could, if we could just stop for a second on that? Um, so the, are, are you saying that the three hundred and eighty-seven calls all related to forty-nine oh three West Chicago?
Yes, and, and you're not, and the next slide will slow the specific address. But when individuals call the police, they'll say uh, forty-nine hundred block of Chicago. They'll say uh, on Chicago and then they'll list the cross street. But when we get there, it's forty-nine oh three West Chicago. When, when, when you look at the next slide, please? The, these are the addresses where they use the specific address only. And we see, we had fifty-four calls to service between January and March and then between twenty-third of March to fourteen of May was thirty-one calls to service. They de- decreased when she stopped. However, we see when they were active, it's, it's a forty percent increase in all calls to service stemming from this one location. Can you go to the next slide? And then here, we see the disturbance types that we get between Friday and Saturday, between eleven PM and five AM. And this is this exact address when they say forty-nine oh three West Chicago. Now, these are residents that are intimate with the property, they know the location. This doesn't account for citizens that do not say forty-nine oh three. They may say forty-nine oh one, they may say forty-nine hundred, they may say five thousand block of West Chicago. But we all know it's forty-nine oh three because we have the video evidence to prove it and we have the calls to service. We have the geo locating on our GPS in our vehicles and in our police computer aided dispatch system. But we see that most of these are disturbance and that LG means large gathering. D I S T M U means disturbing music and then we see PV and those are just parking violations, one and two. And then, and then we see there on uh, it says Sunday, which is really Saturday night going, it's a Sunday morning. So four, five AM, we've even had the firehouse, which is nearly across the street, complain of these very same issues and we see Saturday. So this definitely correlates between the time of hours that they're open. It's five, six in the morning sometimes. And then the next slide uh, alone is uh, I believe, yes, and these are the calls for service details. Uh, number one, offenders have guns. Uh, the, the fifth one down, ca- uh, caller saw seven mil Blackwood guns outside. Uh, the one, two down uh, with the red box, at least ninety or more people. The, the third one, fifty or more people. Uh, the next to the last one, illegal party with underage children with alcohol involved, she saw someone with a gun. And then the last one, uh, possibly guns being allowed. This, this isn't, it's, we're not fucking this.
These service calls related to forty-nine oh three West Chicago?
These all come from forty-nine oh three West Chicago. This is what citizens call in and report to us that caused us to form these large team of officers in order to respond to this location in forty-nine oh three West Chicago.
All right, I, I um, just wanna, for the record, I just wanna make uh, a, a clarification here that um, because DPD relied on uh, the commander's um, uh, uh, investigation that, that, that had been done by CPD, uh, he is treated as a witness for DPD and that's why we're having this back and forth with them. I'm just making it clear for the record that that's what we're doing here. Okay, um.
And then I believe the next slide is a, one of the citizens uh, oh, okay, th- these are the aggravated batteries. So we have in seven, thirty-three North Lamont, right around the corner, but victim stated he was walking to an afterpart in the forty-nine hundred block of Chicago. Th- this is, and then you go to the next, the next slide. Aggravated battery means a person was shot. Unlicensed nightclub, forty-nine hundred block of Chicago. This is, this is individuals that were shot who are saying where they were. And this is another one, uh, go to the next one, please. Arrested, forty-nine oh three West Chicago, large gathering, locked up with a gun. Proof is right there. Next slide, please. Uh, forty-nine hundred West Chicago, uh, nine millimeter. Next slide, please. And then these are the seven documented, and these are the ones just documented. Uh, this, this, these are the ones that were given a records division number. This does not include the information reports and I do have those attached in the next slide. But these are the seven that were documented between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, where the owner or the, other, other individuals here were informed that you're violating your license, you have illegal party. You need to please stop it, send everybody home. And uh, these are the ones that's only on record. Many times the officers don't even go out there and they actually do a case report. They just go down there and they intervene and, and break up the large gathering. Next slide, please. Here we have uh, uh, okay, I'm sorry, this, this letter on the right is just a B A C P informing the subject that they need to uh, come to court after the license violations were issued in association with the case report on the left. So that's the case report when we went out, we called out B A C P, they issued the citations and the individual has a court date. I believe it's August twentieth, if I'm not mistaken, and that's a future date. Uh, next slide, please. And these are information reports that don't carry a records division number. However, it, they were submitted by the officers to document the illegal parties and we see one, two, three, four. Uh, last slide, I, I believe, is the one, uh, oh, these are battery incidents. I forgot about these and this is just uh, individuals that struck. And you see the address, forty-nine oh three, forty-nine oh three, forty-nine oh three. Next slide, please. And this is a letter that we sent uh, the, the applicant on thirteen, twenty twenty-four uh, September, advising the individual to come and meet with us because they were having these large parties and we need to intervene in order to stop this. So we wanted to do it in an informal way that bypassed any official form because we understood the sensitivities of businesses in the community. And the applicants stated they would stop, they did not, therefore, at that point, talking was futile.
So you, so you actually had this meeting, uh, so, so this letter actually generated a meeting?
A meeting between us at the fifteenth district police station.
Okay.
And also met with the applicant in the alderman, uh, Emma Mits' office with the applicant's attorney in order to discuss this entire thing and they indicated they would stop in having these parties. And they posted later on social media, uh, June second, I believe. And that's not including last weekend, they had a large gathering and they've been having proms, send-off and large gatherings every weekend uh, uh, after this. It's just something, but, but there's one video you really have to hear. Can, can you click to the next one, please, and then I'll, I'll, I'll rest? On the next, the next one, there's another one, I'm sorry, one after this one? The one after this one, there's one with one of the residents uh, is complaining and it's the video that they sent in.
Oh, I, I know the one you're talking about.
Okay, so you are familiar, but thi- but this, these are all the social media advertisements. Uh, they, they, they go from twenty twenty-five all the way back to twenty twenty-one. Uh, after hours, doors open, midnight, doors open at midnight. So you're not, you're not partying at one at two, if it opens at midnight, you're partying at five, six in the morning. And we've got, and we've got the receipts. But, but this, this is all the, the uh, intel. And, and, and this is, you know, it, it, we're, the citizens are at their wits' end and when I go to the meetings with the community, they're very unhappy with me because they feel that I haven't done enough and, and I'm just trying to do what's best for public safety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, I wanna go, we've got uh, three other objectors here and I just wanna make clear here um, for, for the other ob- objectors here, um, none of you actually signed up uh, in advance as an interested party, is that correct? Uh, it would have required you to sign up on our website, did anybody do that? I, I don't think any of you did. Okay, all right, okay, so each of you will get um, uh, I know, but I don't think it's them, yeah. Unless, is, is one of you, cause I think Toya Crane, I think she signed up as an interested party, is, is Toya Crane here?
Hello, she signed up on behalf, we have a family building located at forty-nine oh five West Superior. She's currently at the country, but that is my sister and she signed up on our building.
Okay, it still would have required, it, it requires her to be here, but that's okay. Um, each of you are going to get uh, two, uh, two minutes each to address uh, your concerns with the, with the property. Um, and we'll start uh, with, with you right here, if you could just state your name and then you get two minutes uh, to uh, state your concerns.
Thank you, good afternoon, my name is Constance Melton, C O N S T A N C E, last name Melton, M E L T O N. Um, I'm the lo- I'm a longtime block club president as well as homeowner, community member. Um, just wanna read something from, on behalf of our block club. The Superior Block Club is in opposition of the AV previously operating as DJ Liploss, owned by Divana Applicant, Appeling, located on forty-nine oh three West Chicag- West Chicago Ave- West Chicago Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six five one. This establishment causes a public safety risk, not only to our neighbors, but our entire community. There have been multiple disturbances at forty-nine oh three West Chicago Avenue reported to the police and the alderman. To this day, the AV continuously hosts events that are, that extend way past four AM. Patrons of the AV use our alleys and gar- and garages as urinals, threaten neighbors, prevent homeowners from parking and leave an insurmountable amount of trash behind as far as liquor bottles for us to clean up. As the block club president, I have spoken to Ms. Appeling on numerous occasions. I was met with apologies and unfulfilled promises of resolution. The AV has continued to the date to operate outside of the permanent parameters and unlawfully. These large ga- gatherings not only disturb the well-being of neighbors, but it puts us at risk for property damage and harm of violence. The AV, Diana Applicant, Appeling, has continued to disregard the community concerns and City of Chicago laws and ordinance. Our community is all about inclusion and we want all our neighbors', neighbors and businesses to thrive. However, we will not do it at the detriment of our neighbors and community. We ask the City of Chicago zoning board to deny the permit of the said establishment and stand with faith-based leaders. leaders, 37th Ward Alderman, Alderman Emma Mitz, and neighbors as we continue to build a safe, thriving, and peaceful community. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
RG Summers. Um, I state my address, right?
Uh, you don't have to. It's okay.
Um, so I've lived in the neighborhood for four years. Since then, I've witnessed large gatherings. Uh, I've heard the shootings, the music going on. I was not able to upload a video from my residence a half a block away, where you can hear the music clearly recorded on my phone at 3:02 in the morning on a Saturday night. This is out of control. Um, let's see. We've got underage kids, they look young, walking out with open containers, red cups filled with alcohol, because they throw them on our yard. We clean it up. I could smell what it is. They throw constant garbage, wrappers, containers, which our animals are chewing on. It's feeding rats, which brings more problems for the neighborhood. Um, and the biggest issue would be the intoxicated parties leaving and unchecked, where they end up causing, uh, hit and runs. Multiple cars have been totaled in the neighborhood. Without any repercussion, our insurance rates go up, we suffer from this, they don't. They flee the scene. That's about it.
Thank you.
I took the words out of my mouth.
Okay, okay. Um, all right, uh, I, I do wanna, wanna come back, uh, to, to you. You've obviously, I mean, you, I think you've seen most of this, uh, before today, but you've heard a lot of it right now. Um, we saw some of the slides from the officer. Um, and how do you respond to that?
Um, I just wish that, um, you know, we could have been meeting on a better term. But with that being said, though, ever since from that last meeting with you, me, and Alderman, Commander, there has not been events going past midnight. There has not, and I know that because we have a camera system that is set up in the inside and the outside, and we have footage from every since the camera system has been put up. Every event, there were security, so there was no weapons allowed, and especially no underage children allowed to drink and, and all of that stuff. Um, you know, I can't say that I knew what every person's did after they left, but I can tell you this. Each event that I've ever had, it always was with integrity and the safety of people coming. If people didn't feel safe, they would not come and party with me, host events with me, or any of that. We've never had the fire station to come over and intervene or any of that. We've never, out of all the times that the police did come, they've never arrested anyone coming out of the venue. We've never been investigated or questions asked about someone being shot or hurt or any of that. And that's why I just sit here so confidently. Am I guilty of running parties? Absolutely. But keeping people safe is one of my main priorities. Mrs. Constance, you only met with me because I came to a, um, district meeting. I've called you several times. No response, no emails, no replies. You and Commander Morse, y'all do not follow up, and you don't wanna talk to me no more, and that is okay.
Okay. Um, are there, did somebody say something? Oh, oh, you, okay, uh, you, here, pull that microphone in, because I, I don't, I don't think either of you raised your hand at the beginning, so, uh, uh, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, please state your name.
My name is Carmelita Earls. I'm the 15th District Council Police Counselor's Chairperson, and this is my colleague, Karen Winters. I'm here because this is something that I've become a part of, and I'm learning more detail as I sit here. But one thing I want to, um, uh, I wanna say is, police accountability and, and public safety is why I took the oath to do this work. Thirty-two years after retiring from the Chicago Fire Department, I can tell you that on the corner of Lamont and Chicago Avenue, there is a bus stop on the southwest corner. There is a vacant lot that has been closed in with metal corrugated, um, material. And then there is this building. So if I was to make a phone call and say, say, where are you located, the first structure that I would see and that you would see if you were on the southwest corner is 4903. I'm not here to make a comment one way or the other. I'm here to learn because here's a constituent, and ex-social, uh, economic development on the west side is definitely needed. Is the, um, is this particular business owner, I just met her today, uh, is this business owner basically by the volition of her own comments, um, wrong in, in her methodology of doing what's needed? Absolutely. But is the west side, uh, in desperate need of developing that particular corridor? Absolutely. So what I'm asking is, I'm a proponent of anything new because nothing has changed on the west side since the 68 riots. Done deal. Longtime west side resident, I can tell you that from example, uh, and from experience. I have a very good working relationship, hello, Commander, from the 15th District. We, we correlate and collaborate every, every month. So I don't know, um, Mrs. Appeling, but what I do know is that without a conflict, there's no resolution. So if there's a possibility for some form of conditional, um, and high Constance, I, she and I ran for the same position. Uh, this is, this is some form of, uh, I don't know what's needed, mediation, things of that nature, change of behavior, absolutely. Uh, but in the spirit of public safety, you do what you do, Commander, because as the deputy chief of fire, I didn't let nobody tell me how to run my business. So that being stated, but I will say that I see there's a need. The young lady lives in the community as well. She lives upstairs from the establishment. The church next door is not even operating on a regular basis. So, um, to the neighbor that speaks of the nuisance of noise, is it coming from that particular establishment? And I have a question. How many other businesses are open that time of day? Because I understand that you actually hosted the Alderman at that place, correct? So I just wanna make sure that this is a sterile and not something, um, convoluted in this particular situation because it's not many people trying to come to the west side to do business. So thank you for hearing me out.
I, I appreciate that. Um, you know, and just to let you know, so what, what's gonna happen is, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna go back, we're gonna deliberate, and we're gonna make a ruling, okay? And the ruling will be whatever it will be. Um, what I wanna say to you right now is regardless of what that ruling is, whether, whether this, uh, use is granted or, or it's not, um, learn from this because you've, you've clearly got something, you know, you've, you've, you've got people who wanna come to events that you host. You didn't do it the right way, but there's some potential there. So, just remember that. Any questions from the board? All right, I wanna thank everyone for their time today. We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you. Okay, I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to Section 2C4 of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes for enclosed session. I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 22725Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 22825Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 22925Z and 23025Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 23225S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 23425Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 23225S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 23425Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 23625Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 23725Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 23825Z, 23925Z, and 24025Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 24125S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 24225S and 24325Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 24425Z and 24525Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 24625S, 24725S, and 24825S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 18725S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
No.
Commissioner Soto.
No.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner Staley, or Commissioner McDonald.
No.
I vote no, the matter is denied. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board at its May 16, 2025 regular meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move to approve the modifications to the rule text following the six-month review of the November 2024 Rules of Procedure. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, the modifications are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
I vote yes, we are adjourned. Have a great weekend, everyone.